Town Council sitting as a board of licensing advertised public hearing as the Sandy Woods Farm. And I would imagine that that is no longer. Not advised advertised license Charles Mokahi sixty-five be Javon and Tivin request renewal of private detective license to April two thousand sixteen. Where's the police chief? Is this all set?
Yeah, we had a letter.
Oh, it's in a letter, yeah. Do you have the motion?
So moved, yes, so moved, you have second hand.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? Opposed. General Auto Recycling Inc. Junkyard and Second Hand Dealer License Renewals December first two thousand fourteen through November thirtieth two thousand fifteen, subject to renewal legal requirements continued from November twenty-fourth two thousand fourteen. Now, there was a discussion of this.
There was a discussion on that contingency. I think we need to hear from a code enforcement official and town solicitor to discuss the situation.
I was asked, I was asked last week to go out and inspect the said property, General Auto Recycling. I was not the code official that issued the NOV, but I am aware of the violation at hand. What I observed was that the owner met me at the site and gave me a little tour of the facility. What I did observe was he had removed all the vehicles from the area that was an encroachment. He has not removed the crushed shells. He has not given us a soil and sediment erosion control plan. He has not filed the ripdies permit. So at this point, it is still in violation.
What is a ripdies permit? Sorry.
It's, it's when you clear more than an acre of land. It's required, I believe, by the DEM. Correct.
So how much land are we talking about?
It's the original junkyard and then there's another.
The, he, I guess he purchased the piece of property next door. I'm not exactly how much is there, but it appears to be probably a two or three acre clearing that has taken place.
You saw photograph of evidence showing that there was trees and other things on that property prior to his purchase?
Yes.
We have heels.
Do we have any of that or suggestions?
Yes, we do. We have, Kate has all the aerial photos.
And there were trees?
Yes.
I actually seen those photos with Neil about a week ago.
I actually saw them also.
I have not.
Um, the solicitor, do you have an opinion?
Well, actually, I have a question. I notice on the code enforcement, the notice of violations, the assessors plat six oh two lot one fifteen. Was that the original licensed premises?
That I couldn't answer. I'd have to look into it. I know there is some discrepancy. I believe there are three separate lots out there. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
It was two references, one thirteen and one fifteen.
One fifteen. So basically...
Lot one fifteen would be the new purchased lot because it is the expansion of the yard beyond its existing boundaries that is the cause of notice of violation of the zoning code. And it's also, if I understand this license correctly, it's a violation of the license.
Well, actually, that's correct. If I, this is the point that I'm getting to. If you get a license for this type of a use, it's gotta be for the premises. And there can't be an expansion unless you reapply for that. So that's why I ask where the lots are. I haven't seen any of the photos myself, by the way. But in order, in order for this license to be granted, you really need to know what the premises are. It can't just be by the street address. You have to go by the assessors plat line. So when we're talking about an area where a shell is not, I think what the town council needs to know is which lot it's on, whether or not it's an expansion or the existing license that was issued.
It is expansion.
It is. It would be, the owner's here, but he pointed out to me that where the property lot was and then what he purchased just recently is where he expanded.
So could, so could we not issue a license on the existing premises without the expansion? And then go forward with pursuing the required remediation or follow-up or whatever you wanna call it on the expansion?
The second issue is, is the fact that there's been no soil erosion sedimentation plan, which needs to be issued also. But if the licenses to be renewed, would have to be renewed from the initial premises that were licensed in the first place. If it came to an expansion, an expansion unless there's a reapplication for that.
Okay, I see.
I will say this, that the owner was very accommodating and he, he said to me he's gonna do whatever he has to do to bring it back into compliance.
So, my, if I'm staying here, we're talking about two separate properties. One has a license for the junkyard, the other is just a piece of property that they own.
That's correct.
So there's no connection between the business and that property at this point since...
They're both using it.
Not at this point.
This is not anymore.
I said not at this point.
What does that mean?
Not right now. There are no cars on the property. The property is not being used. It's a separate issue.
But it was.
Why? I'll say it was at one point. At this time, the cars have been removed. I'm assuming the fence has been restored.
Has it been?
No.
No. Chris is standing right there.
But the bottom line is, like, what I'm saying is, this business, the second piece of property, while maybe owned by the same owner, is not subject to this license at this time since he's not using it for cars. It's a separate action. If the town was gonna pursue that he cleared land without a...
But he was using it. There was all cars there when he initially came to it.
And that's why you went into this two-month license. I understand that. What I'm saying is now is there a problem holding up his license currently?
Yes, because he still needs other requirements on the original piece of land. Is that correct?
Here's the thing. I'm looking at the license renewal application. It's got the street address, but it doesn't have the assessors plat in mind. That's why I asked the question originally. If you're gonna issue this type of a license, it really does, the premises have to be defined. It can't just be by a street address. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is there still is a notice of violation, even though it's on a separate property, for the soil erosion and sedimentation. Because there's been clearing, because no ripdies permit has been issued, that has to be corrected also. That's all I'm saying.
But, but does it affect the issuance of this license for this business?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you need to make that a condition of the granting of the license. Yes, I do.
Give me, grant the license, then subject to that condition and grant the license, let's say, for six months?
Grant but not issue.
Yes, it won't be issued.
Grant but not issue.
I don't know how he runs his business, how he conducts it, but I'd hate to have somebody out of business while we're trying, while he's trying to remedy the situation. If we can leave him in business, stay on the piece of property that he was on originally and make that license, that property, condition it on, the remedies that have moved on the original property, I'd be willing to go along with that.
But is the initial...
That's what you were saying, Joe, sorry.
But is the, but is the initial property in violation?
No.
You just said that they need...
That's, that's a legal term that Anthony can refer to.
The expansion is in violation.
That's not what I understood. Is the original property in violation?
Only to the extent that he needs a soil erosion and sedimentation plan. I'm gonna tell you why. Because there was a clearing on it, he needs to get that done.
That's what I understood. You can...
I suppose.
Yeah, just introduce yourself.
My name is Chris Petravas. I own the land, General Auto's own. I do not own the land at six oh two one thirteen. That's owned by A and C Realty, which is a limited liability corporation, which, when you sent out the violation, you sent out one to me at General Auto Recycling, the land that I own in my name, and you sent one out to A and C Realty on the way ahead, which is a limited liability corporation. We did not, General Auto Recycling does not own, or I do not own, the property it's on. Another corporation owns it, okay?
But you were using it.
But we were using it, okay? We have since removed all, anything that has to do with the automotive-related business on that property. The property is being used for what is, what is legal. Piece of, the property has been disturbed, okay? It has not been determined whether we need a soil erosion permit right now because we've had engineers over there all winter. And with all the changeover with the building officials in Tivin, it's been tough to get somebody out there to talk to.
But you didn't just get someone.
Just, I talked to him back in March. He was supposed to come two days later. And then you've put his position on hold, which I read in the Daily News. And then I saw him last week and I got notice this one hour after, you know, he had come out, all right? So my, my argument is, General Auto Recycling and plat six oh two one fifteen are completely separate entity than six oh two one thirteen. If you wanna violate six oh two one thirteen, you go after A and C Realty. It has nothing to do with Chris Petravas or General Auto Recycling.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Who are the principals of A and C?
Me and somebody else, but it's not me. Those, used to be a rental property. It was supposed to be a rental property.
Stop right there. You're a related party.
I'm a related party.
Did you have a lease for that property?
Yeah.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do you mind furnishing?
I can get it for you. And I can prove, I can show you cancelled checks too from General Auto Recycling. I'd like those also.
That's fine, but I actually like to take a look at that.
All right.
Is there any physical boundary between the two properties?
No.
Okay. Were you in fact using lot one thirteen for your business?
One thirteen, what, was I? Yes. Am I now? Not at all.
Okay, and you pulled it back?
Pulled it back.
But there's still no, there's still no physical boundary?
There's no physical boundary and there wasn't one pre-existing.
Okay, and there's clearing, there was clearing on that property?
Correct.
Okay. No ripdies permit?
No ripdies, but that hasn't, I talked to the engineer and they said that hasn't been determined if you need one for this. We did. Because there is soil erosion plan in effect when we put all the shells down. That stops the soil from eroding. And everything from that piece of land where we cleared does not go west, it goes east, which is back on to one fifteen.
Did you furnish that soil erosion plan to the, to the...
I told the engineer, the engineer, I tried to handle this since this happened back in December with you people. I've contacted the engineer, but with all the snow we've had, you can't even see the land until two weeks ago. I mean, honestly, there has been an engineer out there. We talked all winter. I came to the town hall three times, you know, trying to say I'm making, I'm being proactive. I'm gonna try and remediate it to the point it has to be remediated to. I'm gonna stay off the property. But they're two separate plaits.
Can I address that? I don't think you get into it, but what you have here is related parties owning the same property. If there's a lease, that, that's a relationship too. There's no physical boundary between the properties. It was cleared so it could be used for the property. You can renew it for the initial, the original parcel, which is one fifteen. I'm referring to the lots by their...
Plats.
Lot number, but not the plat. However, I do think you need to have some contingencies here. There should be a physical boundary. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is you're gonna have to furnish the soil erosion sedimentation. You're gonna have to do that. And also, there has to be evidence that DEM is not going to ask for a ripdies permit for this clearing, but I can already tell you right now, you're gonna need that. You're just gonna need to do it.
That's fine.
Okay? If you do all of those things and make it contingent and on the license renewal application, specify where the business is to be, I think you can renew it. But you have to have time limits, I think, on the contingencies so that this parcel isn't used and, as it was previously. And that's your good faith effort right there.
How much time do you need to remedy the situation?
I don't think, I think I should have to, I mean, this is just layman's. I think the only thing they're gonna honestly make me do is give me a soil erosion plan. If they find I need to do something, I will do it.
I don't understand.
Now, you say you have a physical border. Who determines what a physical border is?
Was that a fence at one time?
It was a tree at one time. We've been, we were encroaching, we wouldn't lose another fence. We were encroaching the property forever, okay? And once we purchased it, we just used none of it. But because of the way the trees are, I didn't wanna get into an argument with Chris Senate. I just said, fine, we'll just stay off the property completely. I won't argue with you that we've been in the wood line there forever. You know, I just didn't wanna get into a he said, she said contest.
How about ninety days?
Ninety days? That's fine with me.
And what is the requirement? You have a physical boundary, soil erosion testing, and a deep well?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Or confirmation.
So if there's a boundary, could be what? A line of stones? What are we talking?
A fence.
A chicken fence. What do you think?
Something that shows the property.
Correct. So you can't encroach upon it again, just the, I guess the idea.
So it can't be used again.
And you know what? You might be right. I don't think you are on the ripdies, but either way, DEM's gonna give you a letter.
All right.
Ninety days is enough.
Okay.
Would someone like to make a motion?
It's usually my job, so I'll do that. I move that we, you wanna, is there language for this, Anthony? Is it, it's issue the license but not granted or the other way around?
You know what? I think you can issue the license, but the contingency is on a ninety day deadline.
All right, so issue the license for, let me see, it's zero King Road, right? Plat six oh two lot one one five. Is that correct?
Six oh two one one three, General Auto. Six oh two one one five.
Is the expansion.
Lobby out.
Okay, so we want, we want...
Sorry.
Three eighty-four King Road, plat six oh two one one three, subject to a ninety day contingency, including a submission of the soil erosion plan, either the ripdies permit or a letter from DEM indicating otherwise, and the creation of physical boundary between lots one one three and one one five.
Can I second it?
Can I make a comment, President? I will not be supporting this or voting for it. I remember way back when, when this gentleman came before us and we asked him if he was a notification. And he said, no, he wasn't. But the letter had been sent out. So I'm not sure if he was a notification or he wasn't a notification. I'm pretty sure he was. Now, he's standing in front of us again, and it's tough to believe what he's saying. He willingly did use that properly, property. He knew it was in violation and he used it.
I'd like to say one thing. I willingly did use the property. I extended onto it. I'm not denying that. You can go back to the minutes of that meeting. You can hear your own town solicitor state that he sent the letter out that day. So unless the U.S. Postal Service delivers in the same day, I don't know how I was standing here that night and received the letter that day.
Hey.
That's why we gave you the extension.
That's why we gave you the extension, right. We gave you the extension back then. We're giving you another one now. I don't believe in that. Sorry.
Okay. Any further discussion with the council before we vote? Motion being made in second, all those in favor? Against?
Don't protest.
I love it. We'll see you in ninety days.
My favorite. This would be, yeah. Appointment of resignation.
This is it.
Arts Council resignation, Wanda Se Long Shore, twenty-four Chester Street. Entertained motion to accept her resignation with regret.
So moved.
On a second?
Second.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? School committee appointment to fill vacancy in two November two thousand eighteen. James Aruda, three seven, seven one Old Main Road. Hello.
Good evening. Long time no see.
Just tell us about yourself a little.
I'm sure that pained you greatly to... There's not much news. Hi, my name is Aruda. I live on three seven seven, three cents, seven one Old Main Road. Quite a few of you have worked with me in the council for the last couple of years. Some of you are aware of some of the things that I like to work, how I operate. I speak to my experience for the school committee. I grew up in town. I went through all the three school systems. I'm a street board school, high school, graduate day nineteen ninety-six from Tivin High School. From there on, I got a physics degree from the University of North Darnith and actually became a full-time high school physics teacher. I taught high school for five years. And after my teaching stint, I actually continued my school career in the administrative side as a technology systems administrator for a school district in Westport. Okay. The reason why I'm running for school committee is being a former educator and working in, actually, well, for eight years of my career between substitute teacher, full-time teacher, and a technology administrator in the school system. I spent a lot of time in schools. I have a very great understanding of what it takes to be a teacher and stand in front of the classroom of one hundred and twenty-seven, one hundred and thirty kids every day and to do my job. I understand intimately how schools are run, how they work, how they get their funding, and of course, how they do their testing. I have intimate knowledge also of how the summer school budgeting also works. I played a great role in that when I was a technology administrator for, for the Westport Community High School, graduate district. That district, in comparison to Tivin, is almost, is almost of the same size student-wise. And Westport's budget is roughly fifteen million dollars for the school system, which is far less than Tivin's. So we had a machine in Westport called the dollar structure. So we were actually able to get a dollar bill to be able to link this table, which required a lot of ingenuity and hard work on my back to save a lot of money. So I know very well how much work it takes and the understanding it takes to actually try and save money for the school systems. We spent countless hours trying to find different ways to save the school system money so we could provide more for the children, especially in technology, as that is a larger learning field. Now, with my school experience aside, I was also a coach, athletic coach for many years. I coached field hockey in my school. I coached baseball. I also did one, one stint in indoor track. I didn't know anything about track, but I could figure out how to run. So, that was a stint that was a mystery. Now, some of the things I would like to be able to do in the school committee is going through school here. There was quite a few people in the school system that gave me a lot of opportunity to succeed. And I can learn some of their names, the names that were there. Of course, it's a long time ago. I graduated back in nineteen hundreds. So those teachers are no longer there. But they were babies on the side.
Late nineteen.
Very, very late. But without those people, some of the things I was able to accomplish in my life wouldn't be if it wasn't for them. And one of them is my high school physics teacher, which actually got me into physics to begin with. And actually got me, and they actually helped me after school with my teaching career. If it wasn't for that person being in the Tivin School District, I probably don't belong with you today. And I'm sure there are many other student stories. The students, some, some, actually, I think one of you was in, actually, two of you were in the Tivin School System. I'm sure you can look back to somebody that inspired you or gave you support as you went through the school and your career. So I'd like to actually strengthen that support because I also understand what it means when a school committee and administration supports their staff and faculty. And there is nothing like it. You actually know the support in the community, the support from administrators, and the support from the school committee for you to do your job. And when that's there, you can accomplish quite a bit. I worked in a school system that had very high standards for the faculty and staff as well as the students. And there was no, and there was no precedent, teacher versus student. The rules, the rules. This is how you're gonna behave. This is how you're gonna, how in the classroom, this is how you're gonna act. And that school in St. Massachusetts had a one-hundred percent graduation rate and also a one-hundred percent passing rate for the NCAS tests. So there was no funny business there. And I understand exactly what that means and how, and actually how to procure that environment. Also, I'd like to strengthen, years ago, when, early in my school teaching career, we had a science fair in Somerset. And it was a very large ordeal. There was hundreds of kids who participated in the science fair. And it was middle school, high school, and we had community members come in, professionals from fields, engineering fields, technology fields, biological fields, come in and judge the reports and the projects. And it wasn't a one-month project. It wasn't a two-month project. It was a year-long project, actually, almost two years. The child would spend most of the year developing what they wanted to do, and the next year, building their project. And the value that gave, I believe, the community, not only the student, was invaluable. And I would actually love for Tivin to do something like that. Not just science fair, but also a science and technology fair. My current career is in technology, and there is not a mainstream of skilled people coming out of school into this field, especially from the high schools. There's a lot of, unfortunately, with, with testing standards, there's little resources we can spend in power, in people power, to actually provide these type of courses. Learning basic programming, learning technology, architecture, and robotics and stuff like that. I think it'd be a great asset to have a science fair come, come to Tivin and maybe even utilize the new library to hold it. That's pretty much, I'm not sure if anyone has any questions for me?
Anyone have any?
I did. I'm wondering how familiar you are with the facilities plan that was performed by this recently?
For the schools?
Yes.
I currently am not very familiar with the facilities plan, this is a recent one. I did, when I was on council, we did, there was a tour of the facilities for the, for the schools. And that was when I first started with, with council, when we had the Picasso School issue with the big water drainage problem. And I actually worked with the school, with the school committee and the school administration, along with the town ministry at the time, to actually, actually get that resolved. Because that was becoming a huge problem.
The Picasso Pond, I remember.
Oh, yes. It was quite bad. And actually, I haven't heard of any problem with that since. So the person we actually, we actually came forward to, to do that job, did an awesome job. And I, I think, for the years, I have been playing on those fields of Picasso. There was always a drainage problem with water. And I'm not sure, but I think that even helped the drainage for the fields as well, that issue.
Well, the only other thing I was, I was gonna ask you, if you had any idea how we were gonna fund the facility study with the millions of dollars that are currently needed for things in those schools?
Well, what if I would like to have, and I think we may share this a little bit, I mean, I mean, you've mentioned this in the past, is we're always hearing about the surplus the school has at end of the year. Actually, a lot of schools have a surplus. There's a reason why the schools have a surplus. It's not because they, they over-budgeted some of their items. And I worked in Westport, we, we, there's only so much money you can go around. What we able to do was we worked hard to make sure we can save as much money as we could on certain things. So we found inventive ways to try and build computers. We tried to buy software. I spent hours and hours and hours negotiating with vendors to, to break them down and give us deals on software that would cost thousands and thousands of dollars to the school system to run student information systems, for example. So with that said, if we're able to actually keep a surplus and put it, like, you've heard it a few times, in restricted account for type of, for those type of expenditures, like a piggy bank, if you will, we don't have to go back to the taxpayers and ask for more money. And of course, we kind of, we try, we wanna do that on the council as well for the town budget with the, kind of, the general fund. If we can save money and put money away for capital expenditures, we have to ask for less money of the taxpayers. It will take years to save the money for a new fire truck. But if we're saving and build the account, restrict the account for that purpose, we don't have to keep asking, asking for money. And whether that, we can accomplish that, I don't know. But that's something I'd like to be able to see.
I'm kinda glad that you have some technology back on. And I'd like to see... I'm kind of glad that you have some technology background, and I'd like to see someone on a school committee with technology background. It's quite diverse group they have now. But I've been spending a lot of time at the schools over the last couple of weeks. We're going over strategic planning for a five-year plan for the schools. And technology is one of the biggest. I, I actually think I left early today, but it might have came out number one. I'm not sure how it did come out. We want to talk about technology in our schools, and that's about all we do. Technology starts in the first grade, starts in kindergarten, and it works its way up. We're not there yet. We're not even close. And speaking to the technology advisor at that school, we can put all the technology in there that we want, but we also have to train people on the technology.
Correct.
So we're going to need more people in the school systems with a lot of technology experience. And that's what teaching the teachers, you know, and students, there's a whole bunch. It's not just put the technology in and let it go.
That's correct.
There's a lot behind it. There's a lot burning anyway.
I have an example for that. So in Westport, we got smart boards. And I had the pleasure of actually using one of those in my last year of teaching in Black City, the regional. So the smart boards come in, and we first put them in the elementary schools. And we saved money by doing installs on set, which takes hours. And that, for a question comes up, how do I use this thing? Right. Oh, my goodness. So who teaches them? So what we actually did in Westport was we took, we actually knew who was tech savvy now on the staff. So we asked that person, are you interested in getting some training on this device? And you could possibly help the teachers and train them. Instead of sending everybody to the training, you could train one teacher and have him teach it to the others. That's their job, figuring out pretty good at it. So I said, we did. It saved a lot of time, and we did that for a professional base. So when the, when the teachers have an in-house debate, one of the agenda items was technology, learning technology. So you have like an all-day course on how to use technology, and that teacher who was trained in it would teach the course to the, to the teachers. And that reduced the cost on the training.
I want to thank Denise for getting me to the schools for the last two weeks. She called me and said, Dave, I wrote your name down. You volunteered. You volunteered, my friends, Denise.
I'm a little busy. All right. Any further questions? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Renee Sartini, 340 Brighton Road. Hello.
Hi, everybody.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name's Renee Sartini. I live at 340 Brighton Road. I'm a stay-at-home mom for the last 15 years. My experience is a little different. I have three children in the school system, one in the high school, two in middle school. I also have one who is in fifth grade in the intensive special education program. I think that's where a lot of my experience tends to be geared towards. I've had extensive experience with special education, which is a big part of our schools. It is a big part of our budget. It is a big part of our budget that needs to be looked at extensively. So the amount of money that we spend on that budget, we don't get the services that we should be getting. That's my opinion, my experience from it, from talking to other parents. I'm out there, I talk to people every single day. I'm in the community, I'm in the schools, I'm at the baseball fields, I'm at the band concerts, I'm at the football fields. You name it, I'm there, baking my cookies, selling my muffins. So my experience is a little different than Jim's. He's, he's an educator, he's more than qualified. I think I bring a different perspective to the school committee as a parent, as an advocate. I also go with many of my friends to their IEP meetings with, they need help, they don't know which direction to go to, they come to me, they email me, they call me. And I want to be that person that people feel like they can come to. I've already had a few people come to me with questions and concerns, little things. Somebody called me the other day and was like, how come we don't have a female gym teacher at the high school? And I'm like, you know, I don't know, it's kind of an odd thing, I think we should. I mean, it's little things like that that bothers parents, that parents think about, that they come to me and ask me. So that's my perspective on it.
That's good.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I had the same question about the facilities.
I knew you were going to ask me that because we talked about.
And your plan to fund.
Well, I'll be honest with you, Joe, because I do not know everything. I've never been on a committee before. I have not looked at the facility plan at all. But I'm willing to learn, listen, read, ask questions. There's a wonderful team already in place on the school committee. I think I can mentor with Deb and Sally, many people, and just learn and listen, and hopefully, I just, I just want to be a part of it and help in any way I can. So honestly, I don't have an answer for you. I know there is a facility committee. I don't know if they've made recommendations or not. I haven't read about that or asked.
They're looking at it.
The strategic plan?
Yeah.
You know, I'm in the schools, I see what needs to be fixed. I was in the auditorium the other day, you know, I see it, it's there.
I guess my second question would be, how do we fund? I think they came in with a figure of close to $9 million in repairs needed to high school, the middle school, with roofs and parking lots and fire doors. How do we fund that?
You know, honestly, I'm, I'm not a budget person. I'm not. I am going to have to depend on other people and learn and read. I'm totally honest about that. That's not my areas of expertise. You know, I know we have people that work on the budget committee. I'm willing to listen to every suggestion and take everything into consideration. I think, I'm just bringing a totally different perspective than Jim is. You know, I'm, I'm here as a parent, wanting to advocate for my child, who came with me tonight to support me. And she's been asking a lot of questions about the process tonight, so it's been a great learning experience for her.
Well, I do think that that is a point, because I came onto the school committee as just a parent.
Right. And I don't think anybody, new person who's never been on a committee is going to come in and know everything. It's, it's not possible.
And the IEP piece and the special ed piece is a huge piece. There's a lot of.
We're a big community of special ed parents.
You really are. I don't realize that.
You really don't, because we're kind of separated from, luckily, I have other children, so, but, you know, a lot of people just have that one special ed child, and they're kind of separated from the rest of the school, and it's hard.
It's a huge piece of the school system.
And going through that process with IEP and regional special ed, regional special ed is very, very difficult to deal with as a parent. It's excellent in the elementary schools. You know, Suzette is just wonderful. She has a wonderful school. Once you reach middle school, which was my transition this year, it's a mess. I have no idea what my kid is doing. She's non-verbal, she's not able to communicate with me. It's, it's a mess.
Any other questions from the council?
Just a quick question. Have you attended a school committee meeting?
Yes, I haven't so much lately. I usually always watch them on BlockSpot. I know. Hate to say, sometimes I fast-forward through some spots when it gets a little long, but I try to always, and I ask Deb questions, and I ask Sally questions.
Have you thought about homeschooling?
No, I haven't. I like them at school.
Can be a challenge either way.
Yes, it can be.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we vote tonight, or do you want to put it off for the minute? All right, I would entertain a motion. The school committee does need someone, so, and they have, but we can certainly reflect with the council laws. The school committee does need one, so quickly.
You can put off tomorrow, tell tomorrow what you can do today.
Okay. All right. On your poll, those today, actually. All right, go ahead.
I would make a motion that we appoint Renee Sartini to the school committee. I think she speaks very passionately as an advocate, and I think that's something we, as a parent. It's an important component to, to what we do as elected officials.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Opposed?
I think the judge said it's clear, I'm not being unhandful, saying I'm opposed because I was really very, very impressed with Mrs. Sartini. I'm sorry, I can't vote for two people, I can only vote for one. I know Mr. Miranda, he was better than Tom, I'm sorry. I would hope that you would consider another board or committee, because you'd be an excellent candidate for just about every position you could think of.
Well, I was hoping she might have given, she actually ran in two years. That's what I was hoping.
I'd like to put in a German's in the middle. Opposition.
The motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you both of you very much for showing your ability to want to serve this committee. Historical Preservation Advisory Board, vacancy, two-year term, 10/5/2017, Bradley Green, One Mill Street. I was wondering why you, I said, who are those boys doing that? Hello, everyone? Would you like to tell, tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, yes. My name's Bradley Green, as you well know. I'm a student at Roger Williams studying architecture with a minor in art and architectural history. And I'm just here to merely ask you permission to utilize my knowledge to be part of the community and help the way I know how to help.
And you're very flexible, most mornings, evenings.
When does the Preservation Advisory Board meet? I think it's during the day, I think. That's going to be a problem for you, if you look at the schedule?
Um, I think it was Wednesday, it was at 9:00 AM.
That sounds right.
That was available, I think, my schedule.
Could I take this one?
Yeah. Have you been following Historical Preservation Advisory Board at all?
Um, no, I haven't, not recently. I've been part, I've gone to meetings of different commissions and boards on Tiverton, and I just wanted to get involved.
Any further questions?
I, just a, it's rare that we see a lot of, it's rare that we see young people wanting to be involved in boards and commissions. It usually tends to be a, an indulgence for people who have more free time, retirement and things like that. So it's really excellent to see someone young. Are you a sailor as well?
Um, yeah.
Excellent. We have a harbor commission as well. Very exciting.
Might want to do that, too.
But it's terrific, and especially someone who's interested in architectural history. I think that's really an important component to what they do. So, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
You're a registered voter?
Yes.
Right answer.
I'd entertain a motion.
I would happily move that we appoint Bradley Green to the Historical Preservation Advisory Board to fill a vacancy of a two-year term ending 10/15/2017.
Motion's been made in second. We're in the discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Welcome to our.
Thank you.
Unfinished business council apparently discretion management letter from audit against figure ended June 30th, 2014.
Yes, Madam President, I just wanted to bring this back up again. This was the audit that was done by Higgs, Sahadi and Company. And I did have the opportunity to speak with Denise this past week. I'd hate to see this go by without looking at the issues that we had in the audit, and none of them get resolved. So I just wanted to make sure that we were following up the recommendations that were put forward by this group. And speaking to Denise, she has brought up all the recommendations that came down for her. I haven't had the opportunity to speak to the school department, and it looks like they had quite a few recommendations. So I'd like the opportunity to speak to the schools, Mr. Fiore, and see, you know, what was going on, if they, if they've taken any of the recommendations. I just don't want to see this back on the audit again next year. I'd hate to see the same issues back on the audit again. Hopefully, we're going to have the same firm do the audit. And I just hate to see the same issues pop up again. I think it's something that should be looked at and taken care of.
I would probably almost guarantee you the schools have looked at this and they're working on this from my past experience, but I don't know. Oh, I guess not, I believe. But would you like him to come here, or are you going to?
I'll personally go to him. But that's not the problem.
With the permission of the school department.
With the permission, I could put it on their agenda.
He's always there.
I'm always on his agenda.
Well, yeah, we don't have any authority or.
No. But I just wanted to see if they're following up also.
I'm sure Sally will welcome that. She's not even paid attention.
Me.
All right. Is that it, Dave?
Yes, that, that would be it.
Financial business council, Wendy Medias updated FY 2015-16 budget. Without saying much more than there has been in another budget presented, it will be at the hearing. And I would really encourage people to please get to know both these budgets, realize what they're all about, realize the cuts there in some of these budgets, and please be very educated when voting for that referendum. I'm not telling you which one to vote for, but I would really love if everybody really took a look at them all. Anybody else would like to add anything to? The public hearing is April 3rd. Council administrator requests authorization to draw down premium stabilization account with inter-local trust health insurance.
Madam President, in the packets, you received a copy of a correspondence that was sent to the town by the inter-local trust. To summarize that correspondence, it was to the effect that the town has maximized the amount allowed under the inter-local trust's rules to be kept in that account. So what I'm proposing is a drawing of this year's, current year's equity distribution to the town as well as all of the overage. So all the money that we have in the account that needs to be taken under the trust's rules. It's timely because we are running very close to breaking even this year. The storm, a combination of storms put us in significant financial stress and pressure towards a break-even point. This will relieve the stress, but only slightly. I think whatever I learned, my math is escaping me, I think ninety-two thousand coming out of the account this year. And for those who aren't familiar with this, the town's participation in inter-local trust is subject to equity distributions when the trust performs, better than expected. And when that goes wrong cash, they distribute that cash back to the member communities. And for many years, the town voted and elected to hold those equity distributions in the account for premium stabilization. If it ever got to the point where rates were going to jump vertically, we could use that money to soften the ball. So we'll be doing that next year, as you know, from our budget conversations. So we'll be taking out what we have to take out this year because we're over the cap. And then next year, we'll be actually distributing those, all of the rest, because we are sustaining a very significant health insurance increase.
Question? What, where would that money go? Is it going to the general fund? Is it going to?
No, it's a credit, it's a credit against our bill for the last month. So our monthly bills are around $130,000. And so we'll be taking that ninety thousand, well, $74,000 as a credit.
So that leaves money in that account, because we're using the credit to make the payment? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Last year now, when you did this year's budget, you went through a process, you set aside $40,000 out of the stabilization account to be distributed this year. So I'm actually asking you to increase that, or to authorize me to increase that to $74,000. So it's, it's not $74,000 bonus to the insurance line. You've already deducted the $40,000 from the insurance line in the budget, so it's a $35,000, $34,000 change.
I'm just getting to the end of this now. We're, all right. I understand what you're saying thus far, but is that money planned to be transferred somewhere else to cover bills, or is it?
I sincerely hope not. We have the last transfer. Uh, we have the last transfer that DPW requires to cover storm-related expenses on the dock tonight. At the moment, I'm not aware of any significant expenditure line we're able to make such a significant transfer to close out the year.
So, it would eventually run into the reserve general fund.
What's that?
It would eventually, at the end of the year, run into the reserve general fund.
The only possibility, and it's a very real possibility, Council, is that if we can't establish our funding mechanism to take care of emergency road repairs, we may end up having a limit to pay.
Yeah, and that's what I was just thinking, we could always do that. Instead of all it into general fund, just putting it into payment.
Well, I just, I just wondering what the, what was going to happen once it was, you know...
We have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment to pay on emergency road repairs on about twelve streets. What do we do? June twenty-eighth or July second is a matter of some discussion.
I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve or authorize the, uh, drawdown of a stabilization, premium stabilization account with the inter-local trust, um, in an amount of ninety-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Second. Opinions remain second, all those in favor, against. Town administrator requests transfer funds to cover DPW overtime sand, salt and gravel from account number two-one-nine-oh dash seventy-nine-twenty insurance to account number five-five-four-oh dash fifty-one-zero-four DPW overtime for three thousand dollars from account ten-twenty dash sixty-seven-ninety-nine council future needs to account fifty-five-four-zero-six-six-ninety-eight sand, salt and gravel for eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Madam President, we're drawing money from two accounts to cover DPW's overages for storm-related damages. Uh, one of them is the insurance line, but the specific insurance line is property and casualty insurance. We pay that premium on a minimum basis. We have a little bit of money left over in the account that will not be drawn upon because we've already satisfied the premium for this entire fiscal year. So, there are sufficient funds in that account to cover overtime request by the director. As for sand, salt and gravel, we are looking at council's future needs. That is really the only account eligible to sustain this request.
Any questions from the council?
Just a, uh...
Who wants to ask a question?
I have a question, and maybe my report is too old, but it was run on three eighteen, but I guess it's for two twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen. In the public's work overtime account, we still have twenty-three thousand dollars. Was that eaten up? That was, that's gone.
It was really high dirt, some stuff.
We had that one last event, right, Steve?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It was, it was good.
What have they discovered? He stayed in that night. He discovered it.
Yeah, there was one last event, and we received some salt shipments, and this is what it's going to cover. It should get us through the rest of the year unless we have another snowstorm or a major overtime event, like a hurricane or something huge between now and June thirtieth, so...
But I don't know.
Cross your fingers.
Tell everybody to stay home if that happens.
Quick question. What do we have left in the shed now as far as salt and sand, or is...
Uh, we'll probably have a quarter, one quarter of a shed, and usually we're full.
Yeah.
Usually, for next season, we run with a full shed, and we're going to be down three-quarters. So, we're already going to be, uh, heading for next year's sand and salt, I would say.
It's not going to snow next year, so...
No, as long as we don't have any snow, we'll be in good shape, then.
I entertain a motion.
Just a question. Um, according to the March budget report, it looks like we only have seventy-six hundred dollars in... And this is coming from future needs?
Yeah.
Yep, all right, that's the only one. Sorry, that was a council contingency.
So, um, I'm just trying to look at some math here. We have a, uh, overtime account that's in deficit a hundred and thirty-five dollars in nineteen, and sand and salt in deficit eleven thousand three hundred and forty-five, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
So, the extra overtime is just in case, or...
It's just to get through June thirtieth. We still have two limits to come down, we still have accidents to respond to, so it just, if we cover us to June thirtieth, unexpected events.
Okay. Well, I move that we authorize a transfer of, uh, aggregate of fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars from count two-one-nine-zero-seven-nine-two-zero and one-zero-two-zero-six-seven-nine-nine to account five-five-four-zero-five-one-zero-four and five-five-four-zero-six-six-nine-eight respectively for the amounts of three thousand and eleven thousand three hundred and forty-five respectively.
Second. Opinions remain second, all those in favor, opposed.
Thank you.
Opposed.
I'm sorry, I was...
Oh, you did...
I was a little late, I'm sorry. I was reading. No, we got there.
New business chief break, he permission to advertise for position of full-time employee in police and fire dispatchers.
Madam President, member of the council, I request permission to re-advertise. We didn't have theory applicants. After testing process, seem to be processed, and background checks, I was not satisfied with the applicants. It is an important job, very important job, it's critical to emergency services, and I was stressing we try to get the best possible applicant. It'll be a twenty-five-year investment, and, uh, everything else is just not, not accepted. Last two houses have been worked out very well, they're tremendous employees, and I'd like to keep that trend going, so keep that, I'd like to advertise again.
Can I ask where we advertise for these employees?
Uh, the head of these, I believe, online, and, uh, we're interested in, you said Daisy News? Yes.
We have to do it in two papers. It's usually whatever the request, might be the four of Herald or the Newport, it's usually where, whatever the company had requests.
Chief, are there any schools that provide any type of training for these type of applicants?
Once we do have a person, we do send them to some training, yes. The reason I'm asking is that we've had thirty-eight applicants.
Thirty-eight, apparently, haven't...
School, man.
Well, some of them did not pass the exam.
I understand. That's why I'm asking, is there a school?
It's a general, I didn't talk, it was a private test, so, the minister, we actually sent away the private testing company for that position. And, uh, that's, that's initial point, um, that we start with.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just wondering if we need to, uh, look at a different pool of candidates, maybe advertise in a different area. I don't know if, uh, not coming up with any solutions, just questions at the moment as far as where we look for, to advertise in other areas.
I can, I can tell you that we do take the test, uh, background checks actually eliminate some of the people who do pass the test. So, the criteria that we're looking for, again, they have access to everyone's personal information, confidentiality, um, and...
I'm just thinking more to get you a broader pool, I mean, maybe, you know...
We also have to keep in consideration, mind that if we start going to, let's just say, the private system, we may get, that's expensive advertisement, but, uh, the traveling starts to be a situation that they have to be prepared with, uh, different storms, et cetera, so...
Thinking more like the local colleges, or...
We have, we have, uh, we have, uh, announced it, and, um, actually, we've contacted the police academy, some people use it as stepping stones to start a police working, go that way, so, we've had cross-applications for police as well as dispatchers. We are looking, but again, we're very cautious.
It's a tough position to fill when you're looking at the pre-dean.
The pre-dean is difficult, unfortunately, sometimes we will be able to hire someone who's employed elsewhere, and they use me on the days off for losing their part-time job. It's one of the better-paying part-time jobs.
I can just have a couple of questions and a comment. My first comment is, you got a lot of nerve coming in front of us with a suntan.
Well, maybe not, maybe today, so...
Um, how many full-time dispatchers do we have? Or if we had, if we had a full, full complement, how many would...
We have eight.
Holy mackerel, I didn't realize there were that many. Okay, um, so, it seems like we agreed to advertise a lot for this position, is it, I mean, you said it's a twenty-five-year commitment. Is that, is that what you said, or...
We've had a little bit, some turnover, not a lot. Um, we did advertise, we did actually increase our, uh, numbers through contract. We have two on the first two shifts, and overnight shift we have one. We have one that splits their services between records and, um, dispatch, like to read, to overnight's two days. So, we possibly, and then, of course, we eliminate, reduce substantially our overtime by, we've got a records clerk and our animal control officer into dispatch as well.
So, what is the, what is the cause of the need to fill positions? Is it retirement? Is it just doesn't work out, or, I mean, it is a particularly high-stress and intense job.
We've had, we've had a couple of people stay for a short period of time and leave. And the job's not, just not for them. Um, I don't think, I don't think they come into the scene anticipating that they're stuck in the cubicle a long periods of time, and, um, I don't think it's, it's, it's not television, is the best answer I can give you.
You can't really test for that, though, I suppose.
Unfortunately, yeah.
I just want to ask you, what, what, people with disabilities, I mean, do we have like a network that we can contact? I mean, it seemed to me that somebody who would be handicapped might be ideal for this type of job.
We also, we also...
Military disabled veteran, or somebody like that, I mean...
The testing procedures open to everyone.
I'm just, I'm just wondering how we get a larger pool, I mean, where we, we go to, I'm still on the advertisement thing, I guess. I mean, if we reach out to the VA or the, I mean, a lot of...
Not a bad idea.
Try to find some different, you know, venues to advertise. We still do the paper, but, I mean, expand, expand the, uh...
We also use Italian website.
Yeah.
Um, we have put it out there as much as we can.
Yeah.
Also, we actually contact other agencies for dispatchers for pre-dean. And again, the police academy is also for someone who might be a stepping stone. You get two or three years out of someone who, uh, worked for us as a dispatcher, and possibly we benefit on this, we've got a look at other individuals and employee, and if they now want to take the police exam, we know what we're getting, someone who's a reliable employee.
Trying to think, the Rhode Island Disabled Veterans Organization, maybe reach out to them and see if, uh, if a lot of Afghan and...
Well, it is open to everyone, so, it's a good thought.
I entertain a motion.
I move that we grant permission to advertise for full-time civilian police and fire dispatchers. Some, uh, no, never mind.
Second.
Opinions remain second, all those in favor.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Town administrator requests approval of amendment to contract for DPW director Steve Belucci salary increase two percent to eighty-five-seven-five-nine effective January seventh, two thousand fifteen to January sixth, two thousand sixteen. So, it's retroactive.
Yes, and not entirely on purpose. Uh, we're trying to stay on top of this and do it in a timely fashion. In this case, uh, it would have been appropriate to do this, letting Stevens' crew, uh, dealing with multiple snowstorms, and then he and I both were on vacation. So, by telling you, we grouped it as much. My recommendation that is part of the public record, um, is a summary of the findings of our, of our confidential personnel process. We've, we've viewed the director's performance for the last year, his major accomplishments and his goals for the coming year, and we are in keeping with or exceeding our expectations as a town and our expectations as an administrator. Uh, on the second page of the packet, you see the fiscal fact statement, recommendation is the, um, salary increase that was in the budget is inappropriate measure, two percent. The one thing, you know, sometimes, um, major accomplishments get forgotten. First of all, I think I'm balancing retrospectively, a lot of people are impressed with the performance of DPW during the visit, but what impressed really most to me, Tom here as administrator, is that Director Belucci paid careful attention to our vendor and our cardboard recycling bill. And whether or not we were giving the money that we would do, and I think it's good management, and felt he was able to give us a significant refund, uh, because he was being observant and because he knew how to handle the situation without having to grow up, is a good accomplishment for the town. It's the kind of behavior that we want to support.
Any questions from the council? I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the amendment to the contract for DPW director and cardboard king, uh, Steve Belucci, reflecting a salary increase of two percent effective January seventh, two thousand fifteen, running through January sixth, two thousand sixteen.
Second. Any further discussion?
This is a one-year contract, is that what it is?
It always is.
This is the last year, the third year of this three-year contract. So, he will also be a premium, so, so notice has to go to Steve July.
Opinions remain second, all those in favor, opposed.
Thank you very much.
Town solicitor, discussion in action regarding proposed settlement of pension litigation city of Pranstown police officers, being de-chafing his capacity as governor of the state of Rhode Island.
This is the, this is the pension, uh, case, it's gotten a lot of press lately, and I don't know if you had a chance to see it, but, uh, the court, the case was back in court today, uh, on this settlement, and what's going on is the complaint is going to be filed, and, uh, it's going to become a class action lawsuit. That has more to do with the plaintiffs in the case, which would be the, uh, union members and retirees, as opposed to the defendants in the case, which is the state of Rhode Island and the various city towns, and some other municipal entities, too. Uh, but, uh, I was asked by the, uh, lawyers that are coordinating the defense on this to bring us up in open session, uh, so that you all know what is going on, um, with this settlement, and, uh, the court is going to schedule a fairness hearing on the terms of the settlement, uh, and also, uh, the component of this, uh, to give effect to the case, uh, the General Assembly will have to pass legislation amending the current law to give effect to the settlement. That hasn't happened, and, uh, I don't think any legislation has been submitted yet, although what I understand is draft out, and it's, uh, circulating. Uh, the court will hold weekly status conferences on the case, uh, but, uh, one of the things that I think you ought to know on this, aside from, um, the impact, because most of what's in the, uh, press is, is how this affects the, uh, the employees, but Matt, uh, I know, has done some calculations as to what effect, uh, this is going to have on Tiverton's contributions if this settlement takes effect and it's, it's marching towards that event.
So, first and foremost, I believe the impact will be fiscal year twenty seventeen.
That's correct.
And the total increase of the town's contribution to return for its employees will be two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars. Substantial chunk of that is going to be because we got the number both for the education department as well as the municipal side. So, our experience on the municipal side will be significantly less than two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, but it is still an increase. So, typically, we split the baby this way, they get two-thirds of the budget, we get one-third, we have about the same number of employees. The average of our contribution rates is way around to a similar number, so I figure around seventy, seventy-five thousand dollar increase with the town side.
I should add that, uh, those numbers that Matt just, uh, forwarded, it's correct, it takes place in FY, uh, twenty seventeen, that's with re-animatization. Part of the, um, arrangements that were made was that the debt would be re-animatized for a twenty-five-year period, uh, for savings now, uh, but stretching it out a little bit later. That's all subject to the legislation.
Yeah, if we do re-animate, it would be thirty-five thousand for the town total. Two-eighteen is straight up on the terms of the settlement without re-animatization.
All right, re-animatization is going in, that's part of it.
Well, then, we're way down, it's down to like about thirty-five thousand.
Is that totally in schools?
Yeah, I remember thinking there's not a very much impact. I'm only thinking there's not a very much effect.
Oh, thank you.
Re-am is going to increase the town five years.
Over five years?
Yeah.
Yes.
Which means another five years of increases on top of the increases we're already going to get. Quite the deal, huh?
Bids and requests for proposals, recreation commission requests to advertise RFP for supplemental work to town farm well with soccer field. Susan?
I forgot to withdraw that one. That was one that was time-sensitive. It was for additional work that we recommended for the lower soccer field that's closed. So we're going to be able to do a couple of the things over under the twenty-five hundred, but it's, the rest of it's withdrawn for now.
DPW requests permission to advertise bid for uniforms for DPW maintenance and police personnel.
Well, thank you, Madam President. This particular bid, we've put out every three years. We're in the last year of this particular bid, it ends June thirtieth. It's for the uniforms worn by DPW mechanics, workers, maintenance personnel, and I think there's one personnel in the police department. So we're going to have to have to go out to bids because this contract ends June thirtieth, and that's what I'm requesting to do.
Any questions from the council? I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move that we grant permission to advertise for bids for uniforms for DPW maintenance and police personnel, subject to the attached bid sheet.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Stay right there. DPW director requests approval to advertise for bids for concrete painting, wash sand, wash stone, bankrupt gravel, screen room, crushed stone, and dense grated stone, high density polyethylene pipe, catch basin blocks, catch basin frames and grates, unleaded gasoline, clear ultra sulfur diesel fuel, daily windmill cover, crack searing, and line painting.
Well, thank you, Madam President. This is very similar to the one we just had with the uniforms. Every three years, we go out to bids, as long as the suppliers of the materials go along with the prices. The prices don't increase, they just stay as they would be the day we open the bids. We grouped all these together, really to save on advertising, instead of going out individually, grouping them, grouping them all together and go for one bid for all of them with one bid opening.
Madam President, if I could just add one thing, because I hate it when facts get in the way, but please repeat things that you've said during your venture presentation. Next year, we're going to begin the process of closing the windmill. And we're going to put one foot of cover on top of the final cover, correct?
That's correct.
Not six inches.
Right.
That is why the budget is increasing.
That's right, it's almost doubled, yes, that's true. And that will be happening sooner than later, because there's areas that we're going to be filling to the final stage, and when we fill it to that area, to the final stage, that has to receive the full two, two feet of cover. Where in, one foot of cover, where we usually just put six inches. So the landfill will have a total cover of one foot of dirt on top of all of our rubbish before we even start the closure process that's going to be necessary to close it. I have one question. Mr. Berucci, the letter that went to DIEM for that extension, when do we expect the response from him? Or do we expect the response? We do expect response. When I originally spoke to them before I sent them the letter, just to grease the wheels, in other words, who suggested we add an addendum to our application for our license renewal, which ended December fourteenth of fourteen, which they still haven't processed the renewal yet. So that's, what, three, four months ago? So, to be honest, I can't answer when they're going to get to the whole thing. But now it is part of the application for the renewal, it's not standing separately, so we all address when they address the renewal. And we paid three thousand dollars for this application to win, to be reviewed, so they've been paid to do it.
Any further question? I'd like to take a motion.
I move that we approve the request to advertise for bids for the DPW director for the listed items, subject to the bid list.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Recreation requests permission to advertise RFP for food and beverage vendors.
My final appearance. So this is the RFP that accompanies the ordinance change, it's so that we can advertise for vendors of progress for the summer.
Any questions? entertain a motion.
That we approve the, or we grant permission to advertise an RFP for food and beverage vendors for the recreation commission.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Against.
Thank you.
Thank you. Open forum, Barbara Palatia, and I can't read this, simplify.
Grant application.
Okay, grant application, all right. It looks like, go.
Barbara Palatia, and we're as deserving as any other community in receiving grants. And in this last one that I filled out on behalf of the Arts Council, which was very, very daunting, I realized that there's a lot of information that you generally don't have when you fill out a grant, and I thought maybe for anybody on a commission, you would have a yearly workshop where you would give us information so that it would simplify the process. For instance, I was asked what precinct I'll be in. Well, we were precinct three hundred and one, I guess. For Senate, it was the number twelve. I didn't know we had a Dun &amp; Bradstreet number, and it was things like that that made it, made it lengthier than it could have been, and if you published an informative sheet, I think it would be a great thing. Also, as Mr. Wettich indicated, on some of these grant applications, they really ask you how, what the investment of the town is in that particular committee or something, and they want hard-fucked numbers, because if you try to explain something, it just rejects it, and then it flips you out, and it was sort of a nightmare, but I think a yearly grant writing workshop could be addressed, and this one just happened to be submitted on April first, and I submitted it in the afternoon, and at four or something, I got a call saying, well, we can't accept it because you don't have a letter from the town manager showing us that you would, he would, he and the town treasurer essentially would see to it that the money is spent wisely and the money would be found through the town. And since I had a deadline of midnight that night, I thought it was an April fourth stroke when she called me, but it wasn't. They did give me an extension, and Mr. Wettich was kind enough on Thursday to give me the letter, and I actually drove it to Providence because I didn't want anything to get lost at that point. So it was then that I thought, gee, you know what, maybe we could simplify it for everyone, and we'd get more grants, and evidently, some of our perks will have to be funded with grants because we don't have any money. And that is just a thought, and the sooner the better, almost. And I have just one other comment, why is the public forum at the end? Are we trying to wear down anyone?
We did that initially, it might be switched back.
It's just in the middle somewhere?
Yes.
It might be easier?
I can probably switch it back.
More positive? But in any case, my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Sally Black, testimony at the State House.
I can't wear me down, I haven't signed, and I'm glad to be with all of you, my company.
Sally would be with you, too.
Yes, so we finally got to the State House to testify on the forty percent, and Mr. Perry came, and Nancy Mello, and Linda was, Linda Larson came also, and we did get to testify also on the bill about Stafford Pond and about the, moving the financial town referendum to Saturday. So it all worked out like within an hour, so it was really good. So just wanted to let you know, we'll see how that works out. Thank you.
Thank you. Town administrator, items and announcements.
Very quickly, I need to remind people that we are actively engaged in the Solarized Tivon project with the state. And remaining due, we've got about four more weeks left. If you're interested, I would ask that you reach out through the contact points, and go through the town website or the Solarized Tivon website, and then reach out to Solar Power and get a quote on your own to see if you qualify. We're doing all right, we're not as successful as New Smithfield was, but we are still doing very well. I think we have forty or fifty active leads in the pipeline, that's up to the sales force to go out and follow up on those in a timely fashion. One other thing I wanted to bring people up to date is, we're not just looking at reorganizing departments, that we are pursuing, and we'll have for council review very shortly, a participation agreement with Prism on streetlights, one potential area to save money in the future. I've also been exploring the rates we pay for life insurance. I think the rates we pay are too high. Industry experts agree with me. So we will be going out to bid probably when this contract comes up to expire, to reduce those costs. And honestly, the same thing, just an example of how we have to do town government from now on, we get a grant. I think you all are aware that we are willing to grant for environmental compliance within our TMD area in this Connet River, that should basically cut in half the price of a street sweeper. Well, other towns won that grant, they have the same intentions as we do. So Director Berucci and I have reached out to those other towns, and we might be able to put our bids together into a group bid, and go to the manufacturer and the, basically a single-source dealer out of Plymouth County, and try to get a better price. If we come in asking for five or six machines instead of just one, we might do better. So we continue to invest a lot of energy in ways to save money for the taxpayers of the town. I want everybody to be aware that that work never ends in town hall. Thank you, Madam President.
Council members with comments and questions, the only thing I have here is to refer to BYOB auditors to the solicitor for review. There's been some concerns around town about it, and some of the counselors have expressed some concerns. So if you could just review that, any comments or improvements or whatever you feel.
Excuse me, Madam President. The initial conversation about that BYOB was geared toward restaurants and bars, not toward these day events and outings, et cetera, so that seems to be what's concerned, I'm hearing as well.
It is.
Thank you.
I had something I'd like to bring up, if I could.
Sure.
Just reading through the minutes from the zoning board, I read that three-duck car wash and gas station had appeared before zoning, looking to have, I guess it was special use permit, to change their signs for gas prices, and they were rejected.
Is this a re...
That was a number of months ago?
This is the second time, right? That was the first.
This was a number of months ago, I read this.
Right, what's happened since then is, they've been working with, actually Trish Hilton got involved with him.
I read the letter. So they, alright, so I missed something, they did get the approval.
No, that's why you went to the planning board. Right?
I don't think it's finalized, you know, but Trish...
No, right, but that's why it went, it went to the planning board.
Yeah, Trish does have a way that...
Alright, so the gears are turning now.
Correct.
Yes, yes. Trish Hilton had been in the audience and asked if she could help it.
I just find it ridiculous that they were not able to. I mean, you drive just over the line, old Bill Onis' gas station, I mean, it's got the electric signs, I mean, it's...
We all did, and we tried to help them, and they've been all working on it. Town solicitor, items and announcements, done. Thank you, because my cold's killing me. Town clerk, items and announcements.
I just want to make mention of the important dates coming up for this Financial Town Referendum. This Thursday, the sixteenth of April, is the last day to register to vote if you want to vote at the Financial Town Referendum. You must be a registered Tivon voter by four o'clock on Thursday, April sixteenth, if you wish to vote at the FTR. And every year so far, we have had people come to the FTR that are not registered voters. They don't understand it follows the election process. It must be thirty days before that you are a registered voter. Also, I have received, as Council President stated, one alternate petition by a Mr. Katz, and they are available, they're not, it's not certified yet, it doesn't become certified till I have the fifty signatures. However, they are available at the town clerk's office, as well as a few copies of the Budget Committee proposal and of the town council resolutions proposed. The elected petitions are available, and I will be staffing the office on Saturday until two PM. That's the deadline to get back into the alternate petitions returned to me with fifty signatures, at least fifty signatures. And on Monday, April twentieth, the Board of Campus will meet to go over the ballot voting and certify signatures, and that will really certify any other petitions. The hearing for the Financial Town Referendum is going to be on Thursday, April thirtieth. It's being held at the high school auditorium, and the, there are mail ballot applications available now, we send them out to our permanent mail needs, and they are available now, they must be returned to us by Friday, May first. So these deadlines are now quickly approaching. Other than that, I just want to remind everyone that there will be absentee voting from seven AM to eight PM here at the town hall on Thursday and Friday, that's the fourteenth and fifteenth of May, prior to the Saturday FTR being held at the Tivon High School. I'm going to put this onto posters and circulate it in as many places as we can around town. It is on our website, we're trying to keep that updated as best we can. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alright.
I move that we go into closed executive session, pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Section thirty-two, forty-six, five-eight-five, five-eight-five, disposition of real property industrial park proposal.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, Mr. Souza.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Mello.
Aye.
Mr. Lambert.
Aye.
Mrs. DeMateris, yes.
Aye.
Mr. Melzer.